Going to number seven, which is also a public hearing for proposed water and wastewater rates for fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty. Presented by Diana Langley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Terrell's gonna bring up the presentation.
Alright.
So the item before you tonight is water and wastewater utility rates for this next fiscal year. So to remind the council, the purpose of rates is to ensure adequate revenues in the water and wastewater enterprise funds. Which covers operation and maintenance, debt service, and then also capital projects. So for background. The council adopted the water and wastewater rate study in April of two thousand sixteen. Which proposed adjustments to the city's water and wastewater rates over the next five years. The final um year of the plan is in fiscal year twenty twenty one. In June of two thousand sixteen, council adopted water and wastewater ordinances. That provides for council review of rates on an annual basis. So as part of the March twenty eighth budget workshop. Um I provided a brief presentation on the three different options for rates for fi- fiscal year nineteen twenty. And then I'm bringing them back tonight for council action. If you recall earlier this year in January, we had a water and wastewater workshop. Where we went over a variety of topics related to water and wastewater. One of which being rates and at that time coun- council directed staff to bring the three rate options forward. So here's a quick slide on water conservation. And so looking at the last three years compared to two thousand thirteen. You can see that in two thousand sixteen, our average was about twenty four point five percent. In two thousand seventeen, it was fifteen point six percent. And then in two thousand eighteen through April, we were tracking an average of eighteen point nine percent. So why is this important? In the rate model, it was assuming a fifteen percent conservation amount. So if you are over that, that means that um customers are utilizing less water. Which means that your revenues are likely to be less than what was anticipated through the rate model. So we are seeing this um on water sales, we're expected to be approximately six point five percent higher. As compared to a ten percent rate increase that was approved for this current fiscal year. And on the wastewater side, we're expected to be approximately six point one percent higher as compared to an eight percent rate increase. So that higher percentage of conservation. Has had a direct impact on the projected revenues for both water and wastewater this this current fiscal year. So just for a brief history. Uh for water wa- rate history. You can see that in two thousand eleven, we had um a rate study that was approved through a two eighteen process. And approved by council and so we had five years of rate increases. And then we're into the second five-year rate study. Where you can see uh significantly higher increases. And that was largely due to the drought that occurred between two thousand thirteen through two thousand fifteen. Similarly, for wastewater. If you look at the rate history again, increases went into effect in two thousand eleven. And then again with the new rate study in two thousand sixteen. So the three options that council requested that staff bring forward. Um one option is no increases for fiscal year nineteen twenty, and in fact, that's what the budget assumes. Because we weren't sure what rate increase would it be adopted by council. We just assumed no rate increases in the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget. A second option would be a three and a half percent increase for water. Or a four percent increase for wastewater. A third option is a seven percent increase for water or an eight percent increase for wastewater. So how were? How were these rates identified? So last year when we did the rate models, we look ahead. And we were anticipating a seven percent water increase and an eight percent wastewater increase for fiscal year nineteen twenty. So that's how that option three was determined. And then in January, council directed staff to look at the zero increase and then split the middle. And that's how you came up with the three and a half and the four. So under the various options for water. You can see that we have the current rates. A zero percent increase. A three and a half percent increase. A seven percent increase and then what's been approved through the prop two eighteen amount. Similarly, for wastewater, you have the current rate. No increase. A four percent increase. Eight percent increase and then the proposition two eighteen approved amount. Sewer's a little bit different in that um it's broken down by use and so you see you have. Single-family, multifamily, commercial. And then as you go into industrial, they're actually charged based upon their loading on the plant. So it's volume, total suspended solids and but B O D. And then you also have the septic charges, septic collar charges. So just for some. Information in terms of how does it impact a bill? So if you take a one-inch water service for a single-family dwelling. You have a, I'll use the annual, which is about an average of fifteen H C F. Which H C F is a hundred cubic feet and one H C F is seven hundred forty-eight gallons. So on a monthly basis, the average. Household on an annual basis would use fifteen H C F per month. So under the current scenario, you have a thirty-five dollar and eighty-four cent water bill. Fifty-two dollar and ninety-six cent sewer bill, so totaled eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents. If you were to increase water by three and a half percent, sewer by four percent, you get ninety-two dollars and seventeen cents. If you go with the seven percent and the eight percent, you get ninety-five dollars and fifty-five cents. If you were to go with a proposition two eighteen approved amount, it'd be one hundred dollars and thirty-five cents. So the fiscal impact from water under the three different scenarios. So the additional revenue that would be generated from the rate increase, of course, if you have no increase, it's. No additional revenue as compared to this current fiscal year. Under the th- the three and a half percent increase, it's projected to be a little over half a million dollars. Over the seven percent increase would be a little bit over a million dollars. And so what does that mean? Once you deduct out the operations, any deduct- deduct out debt service. That results in a net net cash flow after rate increases, which equates to money available for projects. Of two point six million dollars for no increase. Three point, almost three point two for a three and a half percent increase. And three point seven for a seven percent increase. What this doesn't take into account is that as part of the budget, council adopted to reallocate. The two thousand thirteen water certificates. From an allocation of seventy-five percent new customers, twenty-five percent existing customers. To fifty percent new customers, fifty percent existing customers. And so that's going to be a reduction of this um net cash flow of approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Earlier this year, we just finished the water master plan update. And so in looking at the funding required for existing water system deficiencies. It recommends a schedule for funding capital projects. And as you can see, in the first one to five years, it's a total of thirty-six point six million. Six to ten years, twenty-two point six million. Eleven to fifteen years, nineteen point five. Sixteen to twenty, nineteen million for a total of one hundred five point four million. Now that does include three million annually for pipeline pipeline replacement. Now we recognize the water master plan is um. I- it's a master plan and so that's identifying everything you need. And oftentimes, master plans as they equate to reality. You don't have the luxury of being able to get um to. To collect that money and implement your water master plan. So we recognize that, but this is just showing. Uh what would be required to fund those projects if money were no object. The fiscal impact for wastewater. So if you had no increase. It would of course be zero additional revenue. Four percent increase is six hundred, about six hundred thirty thousand, eight percent increase, a little over one point two million. And the net cash flow after rate increases for no increases about one point five million. A four percent increase is two point one million and eight percent increase is about two point seven million. So what this doesn't take into account is um. The an- anticipated increase in cost for biosolid disposal. Council recently gave the um. Direction to negotiate with recology on a side letter agreement to our franchise agreement for biosolid disposal. And so we know that those rates are gonna be going up. And so this doesn't take that into account for this fiscal year. So the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing. And then adopt a resolution setting the water rates at a rate less than the proposition two eighteen approved rates. And similarly, do the same for wastewater. So in your packet, you have three different resolutions to choose from. For water and wastewater um so that we can proceed. The alternatives. Is to consider a different option for implementation of water and or wastewater rates. And then this is something that's, this next bullet's very important. Adopt rates with an effective date of August first two thousand nineteen. Now I know we have at least two people in the audience tonight. That have come forward previously um. Regarding the July first implementation and and why the July first implementation has been uh. Contentious item in the past is because. July first would be applied to the June consumption. And so in the past, um the customer, some customers have come forward requesting an August first implementation. So that it actually applies to the July consumption, so it equates to the actual fiscal year. So those are alternatives that council could proceed forward with as well. So with that, I recommend that you conduct a public hearing and I'm also here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. If we could have uh. Mr. McDowell come forward and while you're doing that, I will open the public hearing. Which is the public hearing for the proposed water and wastewater rates for fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We do have the one as stated, Mr. McDowell. Welcome, sir.
Mayor Harrison, council members, my name is Dale McDowell. That's tough to follow there. But and uh my comment about the rates, just very simple, take the zero increase and go. We've got funds to carry on and okay. And she covered the the one about the uh the rate so far, we're running at about a. Uh sixty-six percent increase for. Uh three years, that's not counting this one. So with the. Proposed increases, that's gonna jump to somewhere between seventy-five and eighty percent increase for the year. And. That's with an assumption of. The average, which has been talked about in the past, that uh average uses is uh twenty, twenty units a month for the aver- average family. Not just the basic fifteen units. And. So uh that and then uh in comparison to the. Previous three, the last three years of the last five-year plan. Uh it was up uh like two dollars and twenty-four cents. So we're about a five hundred, oh, five and a half, five hundred and a half uh. Uh percentage increase in this three years compared to those. So always look back at those and see. You know, that's a, that's a huge difference that I re- realize makes. So we got some extra money there, but. Anyway, I think all the rate payers would uh, you know. Appreciate your consideration and. Uh and moving the rece- recessed it back to July the first with. With the payment coming on August the first bill, which that's the one that went back where we Juneed for. And be a good time to move that back and I'm sure the rate payer would appreciate that. That would coincide with your fiscal year, which that's one of the things that you want to do and. All these changes that's taking place and with the meters and everything. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Phil Trainer, U of City. Uh on the water issue. I would like the council to consider. Uh if you put through your eight percent in- increase. You'll be getting another. Seventy-five percent increase in your profits. So what I would like the council to do or like the city to do. In your web page. Tell the public what you're doing. Show them what the water. What's actually happening in the water department, what's happening in the wastewater department. Show them that they are actually a profit motivated center. And show us what's happening. But I think if you're going to go through with any increase this year, tell the public ahead of time. And if you do go through with an increase, what are you doing with the money? Transparency is a wonderful word in politics today. But we've blackened out all the windows. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Phil.
I'm back. Been busy. Uh my name's Thomas Burns, eighteen eighty-five Green Gate Street. So I love paying more for less. I mean, I see it everywhere I go. You can't even get a half gallon of ice cream anymore. You know, but I'll share this uh little story. I met. I know this guy from the Soviet Union who immigrated here. In the nineteen eighties and I saw him. A few weeks back and here's what he told me. He said uh. He's looking to move back to Moscow because he said uh. He uh and he lives in Florida right now. He said. In the United States, I feel like I'm on a slave labor program. Ever increasing prices. And uh he said, at least when we, when I lived under communism. I had time for my family. So the escalation of all our fees on and on and on. And inflation. You know, there's people out there that, I mean, I can afford five more dollars or whatever. But there are people out there that uh can't afford. A steady increase, time after time after time. Not only underwater, but on everything. And we heard P G and E. It was a nice presentation, but what he failed to say is we're gonna stick it to the people to pay for it all. And that's the facts. That's what I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else care to comment? Alright. Harry, no further comment on the issue. I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to matter to council.
I have a question, but I always get to go first, so someone else wanna go? It's a privilege of the right-hand seat, I think. So this is like the Price is Right or that's right? Um, thank you for the presentation, uh Diana. Are we uh able to, first question is, are we able to? Change the rates at any time or is it a one-time-a-year scenario for changing rates?
No, you could change it anytime. It's just uh when we s-. We redid the ordinances for the water and wastewater rates in two thousand sixteen. We committed to bringing it before council as part of the May budget study session. So that you could review annually as part of the budget process, so you're required to do that. But you could come back anytime uh throughout the year. The the main thing is you can't. Increase the rates more than the proposition two eighteen amount.
Okay, so I wanna zero in on the wastewater um more than the water right now anyway. So I know that West Yost is doing a study for us.
Correct.
And it's going to uh, it's gonna have some contingencies in there and different scenarios that they're. They're gonna give us information on. When will that study be completed?
Early twenty twenty.
Early twenty twenty, okay. And uh as you mentioned in the report, um. The previous council opted not to include biosolids when they were negotiating with recology, but now we are. And that's going to affect, potentially affect our wastewater rates, correct?
So the current rates include our current cost for biosolid disposal? The issue is that we know those costs are going to increase.
So when we're looking at a zero or 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 the proposed rate increases, we already know that if we choose. The zero, it's going to go up anyway.
Yeah, so what that would equate to is you would have less money available for capital projects.
Okay. That's the questions I have for now. Thanks.
Good questions. Through the mayor. Um again, thank you for all the presentations. You've been very thorough with with everything. Um I hear a lot of confusion though uh from the general population trying to figure out, you know. Is it a profit center? Where's all the money going? Uh back from our very first workshop on our uh water and wastewater. Uh the baseline eighty-eight dollars that you're paying eighty-eight eighty. Uh on the water side of that, fifty percent of that bill is going to debt service. On the sewer side, thirty percent is going to debt service. So instantly, we have fifty percent left for operations and expansion. And at the same time, we have seventy percent on the sewer side for operations and expansion. Um. I've heard it before I got elected. I got an email. Uh I think most of the council got it as well. Um. It roughly a uh. Uh how old was he? Was he in the, anyways, elder elderly gentleman, fixed income. Uh dealing with the eighty-eight dollars a month, single. He he goes on to say that he can uh only flush his toilet, wash his clothes and brush his teeth a few times a day. Cause he's on a fixed income. The reality that we have is. Things are going up. Um but the way that it's gone up under two eighteen, I'm very uncomfortable with. I'm like Mr. Burns. Five dollars isn't gonna break my bank. But we have a lot of people out here that are elderly, that are on fixed income. Five dollars is huge. Five dollars means the difference between possibly getting a medication or not. The difference between, you know, uh having a decent meal or not. And the sad part about it is is those people will usually not speak up and say anything. Um also, uh I understand under Prop two eighteen, there's no way for us to subsidize. The bills. Is that correct to my understanding?
You can't subsidize at the um. Make the other rate payer subsidize. You can subsidize from other funding sources such as the general fund.
Right, uh and that's that's what I was kind of. Getting to. I mean, our general fund only has so much money that we have to allocate to take care of everything. Um but then at the same time, there's no way to charge a surcharge. Onto the bill and then use that as kind of an offset for the um the people that are in a hardship situation. Um as tough as it is. Uh I've kicked this around over and over and because of the prior actions it's gone on since two thousand eleven. Basically, the water and sewer bills have, they've gone up almost a hundred percent. They've gone up roughly ninety percent since two thousand eleven and the charts clearly showed it. We went from roughly eighteen to thirty-five and then we went from. About forty-one. Uh I, you've got the numbers back there on the graphs. There we go. We went from uh thirty-one to fifty-two and then we went from like eighteen to thirty-five. So almost doubled. Over the years, eighteen twenty-five up to thirty-five eighty-four. So. Basically, a hundred percent increase over time. Uh we've been through recession. We've come through recovery, we've gone through a housing crisis. The the biggest problem we have in our area is a lot of the incomes have not come back, Mr. Mayor, to to that kind of level. The fixed income is still the fixed income. Um as much as I know the need and I know what we're sacrificing. Um I've said it from day one, uh I do not feel that the rate payers of the city can bear. Any more increases for the year and I do realize that this is a trade-off from setting aside for future expansion. Um we do have things we gotta deal with with the biosolids, cause that was a mess that was left for us uh there, Mr. Councilman. And um. I just think that we need to try to look at other ways to fix this in the near future versus just another rate increase. So. I would be in favor of leaving them for now at zero for the next year.
Thank you. Anybody else care to comment?
Through the mayor, um. Diana, what, one of the things, um, you know, as I'm learning more and more about. Wastewater and water and infrastructure, um it's been. Quite challenging to be honest about learning all these particular needs in the city and then how um. Rates are connected to the um. The use and um and maintaining the infrastructure. So when you mentioned um. That within the rate itself, you know, it's part of operation and maintenance. Um debt service and um C I P. Can you explain a little bit of each one to help the consumer understand?
Mm-hmm.
How that ties into that rate? Um and. Then I'll ask my following question.
So the operation and maintenance pays for the operating budget. For the water treatment plant, the water distribution crew. And then the wastewater treatment plant and the collection system crew. So that's salaries and benefits, that's material services and supplies, huge portion of that's power. Chemicals, um because water and wastewater are very intensive in terms of material services and supplies. And then you have debt service and so the city has either obtained uh loans. Or sold bonds to fund infrastructure projects. Uh particularly for um water and wastewater, it's either to. To reconstruct or um rehab facilities. Or in some situations, you're building facilities that do benefit the existing customers as well as the new. Uh development and so that's why you have that split between new and old. And so when you are collecting rates. Right off the top, those are two obligations that you have that um. You, they they get deducted first and then whatever's remaining goes towards your capital improvement program.
It would that be then what you're referencing to the additional revenue um that cash flow rate?
Yes.
So that's the remaining balance because we kinda take these two-thirds, I guess, if you divided. And and those three items that you mentioned, correct?
Right.
Okay, um so then with the plan that was mentioned about um. The wastewater master plan, correct?
Yes.
And that. Can't, and just kinda again summarize it a little bit, just what is that plan and the intent of that plan, but not too long in length, cause I just. Wanting to help understand this.
So the wastewater master plan is a comprehensive evaluation. Of the sewer collection system as well as the wastewater treatment facility. And they go through and evaluate the existing condition. And determine which, what capital projects are necessary to um. For replacement, rehabilitation, uh you know, for the next twenty years. So I I showed you that fiscal outlook for the next twenty years. And so identifies those improvements that are necessary. And then what that does is it helps to steer um your rate study. And then also what, you know, rates should be collected in the future, especially. You know, as Councilman Shaw noted, uh if there's a desire to go in the future, pay as you go. Versus financing, and that looks completely different than if you're going to finance projects. So um that master plan is a comprehensive evaluation of your sewer facilities. To identify what improvements need to be constructed.
And um I guess I'm curious to know um. Why this plan wasn't done earlier and why are we waiting? Now, and I know you mentioned it before, but there's new.
Right, so the last wastewater master plan was updated around, I believe it was two thousand six or two thousand eight. And so um it's with the significant changes in water consumption due to the drought. That greatly impacts the um. The estimates for how much people utilize the sewer facilities. And why is that important? When you're looking at your infrastructure to serve new development. That has a potential to reduce the pipe sizes that are required to serve new development because people are now using less water. And so we felt it was time to do a comprehensive update because there's been so much change since the drought. And then also your master plans you wanna update approximately every ten years. There's change in technology, you need to reevaluate your system to make sure that you have something moved in the priority. And um also as part of this master plan, we are evaluating biosolids disposal because. Over the last few years, there's been so many changes in technology and how you deal with biosolids, not just uh disposing the landfill.
And has there been um changes in some of those um rules within the biosolids from the state?
Yes, there's a state legislation that is completely changing how biosolids are addressed in terms of organics. And so the state is putting a restriction on how much organics the landfills can accept. And that's impacting rates and the ability for landfills to accept biosolids.
And that's the process that we're in right now to determine that particular rate, whatever. Because of these changes in the law and where we're heading, okay? Um thanks for taking the time to kinda detail that out a little bit more. Um. So with the wastewater, excuse me, the water master plan, uh so those would definitely, those two plans would. Uh complement each other in how. Whatever we need to prepare for the future, right? Now, um I was uh, I had a long conversation with a a long-time developer um here locally. And um mentioned about the capacity of the facilities.
Mm-hmm.
Um in our region. And so to look at uh potentially developing in, if we were to do that. Um in our city, which I hope we do because we need some. Or a lot, I don't know at this point, but um. Where are we with capacity-wise with uh water and wastewater?
So from a plant perspective?
Mm-hmm.
You have a lot of capacity about the water. you have a lot of capacity of both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment facility, depending upon where development occurs. Uh, you have some limitations in terms of your actual infrastructure to areas that could potentially develop, so the actual pipelines that get there. In terms of sewer collection, if it's utilizing the existing trunk line that goes down Walton and Lincoln, there's only a certain amount of capacity that we can accommodate for new homes. And so any significant developments require the installation of your larger diameter transmission water lines and then your larger diameter sewer collection lines, particularly to serve the Western sphere of influence area.
Okay.
And I just, let me add on to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So new development, uh, the infrastructure for new development is paid for under connection fees, which is separate from rates.
Correct.
So rates is attributable to existing customers and existing infrastructure.
Um, hypothetical situation, so if we were to increase development, would that mean that perhaps rates could decrease because there's more consumers or is it across the board?
Um, it could potentially decrease because you do have more consumers to spread the cost over. However, long-term, if you're setting aside money for that ongoing infrastructure replacement, you're also increasing the amount of infrastructure to ultimately be maintained.
Okay.
And then you could potentially be increasing your operation and maintenance costs if you increase significantly, cause you need to bring on more people for the maintenance of the facilities.
Okay. Um, thank you for that. I think that at this point, um, I am leaning towards, uh, in this moment, no increase for this particular year. Um, but I'm interested to wait until we get that, um, wastewater master plan, combine the two and perhaps, um, you know, relook at it in the following year if we all agree to no increase at this point.
I will add that with the final year of the master plan being fiscal year twenty twenty-one, staff will be bringing up proposal in twenty twenties to start the next rate study. Um, however, you do have Prop two eighteen rates set high enough that that would be part of the analysis is do we need to move forward with any type of Prop two eighteen study because you still have the ability to set rates up to the two eighteen amount, so that would be part of the analysis. But we would recommend, um, undertaking the next rate study in twenty twenty so that in case a proposition two eighteen process need, did, did need to take place.
Right.
It could do so in early twenty twenty-one, so you could set it up for implementation for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
And so if we were, if we all came to agreement or not all, you know, majority, uh, decided not to increase um, this, this year, um, I, I think that to say to our community that there's going to be a need perhaps the following year. Um, you know, for allowances for this particular year, we didn't include the increase in, in the budgets for nineteen twenty. Um, but based on, uh, the needs of the facilities in order to maintain the quality of what you're receiving at this moment, uh, unfortunately, sometimes those things end up costing us a little more. But the rate discussion, I don't think is going to end here, obviously. I think we're gonna continue having this conversation. But, um, at this moment, that's, that's where, um, I'm leaning towards that position. Thank you.
Follow-up through the mayor. Yep. Um, Ms. Langley, uh, thank you for, for hitting on that. We've had previous discussions towards the plants and things. You hit on the key issue that basically cripples this city in various ways. And that is the fact that we have not developed our infill area. We haven't accessed the gold mine setting here that starts making things work. Because as you said, our, our water and wastewater, if it's in the particular areas of the infill, which is what we've identified as our key area, that would increase the revenue and our system at current could carry that load. And so, uh, I, I appreciate you bringing that and, and Esmondola, thank you for bringing that as well because that's really the key to everything that we're doing is the fact that we have not economically grown in the city in a number of years. And that is what gets us into further trouble with our, um, with our water and wastewater and such because we could uh, basically share the love with everybody if we had more people in the town contributing. Uh, so I think that as we look at the master plan, that that has to be part of what we're looking at in the future is we have to grow, like we've committed to as a council, we wanna grow this city, we wanna develop the infill. We wanna bring businesses in, we were bringing families in, and I think we've all talked about different goals and priorities and different discussions that we need to do that, but that is a viable key and I wanna just bring that point up, that that is how we can help protect the rates in the future. So thank you.
Through the mayor. Yep.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Diana. This is a real tough subject. This is, uh, real tough. Uh, I'm kinda lucky I've been in this industry for the last thirty-five years. So I know, uh, the process, what the city's gone through. So I'm gonna start off with is Diana, the, uh, four years that we didn't raise the rates back between seven and, uh, eleven? Is that what, uh, is one of the reasons why we're in the situation that we're in today that having to, uh, raise rates annually?
There are a lot of factors that, um, factor into that. That would be one of them. The other is, uh, a large, there was a large impact of the drought.
Yes, okay. And, um, if council chooses not to raise the rates this year, is, uh, that gonna put a burden on the, on the city here for next year in the future?
So as noted in the staff report, the current fiscal year or the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget does not assume rate increases. Um, and as you saw in the presentation, we do have net cash available for projects under all three scenarios. Of course, under the middle increases and the higher increases, that generates more revenues, which equates to more money available for projects, which puts us in a better position long-term. But in terms of, um, if they, if the council chooses to decide with zero increase, then we still have net cash available for projects. It's just less. It's not something I would recommend. Um, you know, if council does it this year, I absolutely would re- recommend against doing it again next year because it's going to catch up to, um, it's gonna catch up to us.
Yes, that, okay. And, uh, option three is just to break even, correct? That's just for us to break even for, uh, running our facilities.
What do you mean by break even?
Well, uh, the, uh, seven percent and the eight percent, that's just, uh, to hold us over even?
No. So I'm, so I'm trying to understand what you mean by break even.
Just, uh, keep us afloat. How about, how's that sound? Just keep us afloat?
No, cause under all three options, you still have net cash available for projects. Option three just provides you more cash available for projects. And what that would do though is equate to, um, a potentially lower increase proposed next year. If you do a zero percent increase this year, then that would likely result in a recommendation of a higher increase next year than if you went forward with the seven and eight percent rate increases respectively.
Okay. So I know this is real tough. You're not saying you could pay me a little bit now or pay me a whole lot later? Cause, uh, that's what's gonna happen. Costs, chemical costs, everything's going up, everything. And if we could do just a little bit each year, like I said, uh, between, we kept it the same for four years and then we had to do this and that's where we're at, the situation we're in today. If we would've just raised it a couple of dollars each year, those four years, we wouldn't be the situation that we're in today. I'd like to, um, make a recommendation that we, uh,
You're making a motion?
No, not making a motion, just recommendation, cause he's made a recommendation too. I just wanna, well, all right.
Well, we have one more comment.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Sure. Okay, go ahead.
Didn't mean motion by recommending.
No, just recommendation.
Express your opinion.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I, I just, uh, like I say, we could pay a little bit now or next year we could pay a whole lot more, cause it's gonna come back and it's a, a little each year is better than none this year and then have to pay twice, three times more next year or the full amount of Prop two eighteen. And that would be a real big burden on, on our, uh, senior citizens in the community. So I'd like to, uh, propose, uh, make a recommend, not a recommendation, uh, opinion.
Is that?
Would, yeah, my opinion would be, uh, take B, the three percent and the four percent. It's not great. I checked it out. It, it would be five dollars. It would be five dollars more. It wouldn't be ten. And I know it's a lunch, it's a prescription, it's something, but it's better spending five dollars today than having to spend fifteen or twenty dollars next year or in the future.
Thank you very much. Sure.
Through the mayor, I appreciate the questions of, of all the council and the answers. It, it helps. Uh, this is a complex problem. It's easy, I think, uh, to sit back and kick the can down the road and, uh, and watch while deferred maintenance doesn't get done and the cost to, to fix the, the system continues to increase. And it's also, uh, it was a little disheartening to find that the can was kicked down the road on the biosolids, to be honest with you. That's a, that's a, a, a known issue that, uh, could have been addressed earlier. We're addressing it now. But one of the, the key comments I heard as I walked door-to-door, uh, and, and this is always important to me because this is the constituents talking, is their concern over our water rates. And certainly you've done a, a fine job talking about how much we need to increase water rates. But I've also heard from the citizens that we, that I feel I represent about their deep concern about the, uh, how high they've gone. At this point, uh, I'll wait for the motions. Um, I guess if we're rendering opinions, because the wastewater, um, study has not been, has not yet been completed and because we are under, uh, or in negotiations with, uh, with Recology right now and the biosolids, we have no clue what that rate increase is gonna be, I would certainly, at this point, uh, have, be of the opinion that wastewater rates, we hold at zero until we get more information. And, uh, and I'm gonna let the mayor have his, his, uh,
Feel free to make the motion if you like.
I'm not gonna make the motion. Yeah, I want you to have your chance of answering questions. But, uh, as far as the water rates, uh, I'll hold off until, until Mayor Harris talks.
I'm a firm believer in, you know, pay a little now or, uh, to avoid paying a lot later. It just, uh, proper maintenance, same with your car, everything. It just makes sense to me. It's the way I would do it if I was one person sitting up here. It's the way I would do it at home. But I also think that perhaps as long as the public is aware that it will be that situation that, uh, perhaps it would be in our best interest to literally listen and go with the zero percent for this round pending those two, uh, items that you brought up, sir. Uh, that way we can make a more informed choice, uh, when it comes to water rates. It's a big deal, the five dollars. Some of us are fortunate enough to, we won't even notice it, but a lot of people, it's a big deal. And, um, I think we need to send a message today that we hear that and we find that important. So it's my opinion. I'll entertain a motion if anybody has.
Through the mayor. Mr. Mayor, uh, I move that we adopt a resolution setting the weight water, uh, write that again. I move that we adopt a resolution setting the water rates, uh, at a rate less than Prop two eighteen, approved, uh, approved rates of zero effective July one, uh, twenty nineteen, meaning the rate's zero. Or the rate increase is zero.
So option A.
Option A.
Very good.
And I would, you want them separate motions or one together?
Go ahead.
Uh, the addendum to that would be as well, the wastewater rates at a rate less than the Prop two eighteen approved, approved rates effective July one, twenty nineteen at option A, which is zero increase.
Motion for option A on both?
Yeah, second.
Second motion and second. All those approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. You, are you just a, what is your record?
Yeah, we, we, what was your?
So Mr. Cardo's is on record as, as voting yes as well, so unanimous vote to keep the rates at zero. All right, so.